...on school improvement strategies and school improvement planning process and all the attendance related pieces to it. I think tonight was more of the policy overview and we didn't bring school representatives, although we've got our EDs here, but I'm not sure. There's probably a separate topic that's pretty in-depth, to be quite honest, to go into all that. We bring all that back with how individual schools are dealing with that.
What's our district's strategy for decreasing the pretenses of students that are absent ten or more days?
I think I can speak to that. I think that there was some misunderstanding with the way a question was worded. Let me take a step back.
Okay.
Right here, we're talking about the implementation of school attendance teams.
Yes.
So that is the proactive one of the...
That's the strategy.
Yes, sir. That is one of your proactive supports. We want to ensure compliance with the law. The development of the attendance team is how we are ensuring that we do that and monitoring those milestones. So these are what you may refer to as objectives to ensure fidelity with implementing those school attendance teams.
That's helpful. Do you use that metric that we're using strategic plan for your team? I mean, I understand at school level, I'm not trying to get and see school by school, but...
So the implementation of our strategic plan was 2014 and so was the changing of the policy.
Yeah.
So, yes, those pieces were looked at.
Okay.
And our goal is to continue to monitor at this point. We want to identify trends, which I think this would be helpful. To your question, Mr. Snow, as you can see, there's a sharp decrease in the number of referrals. Our goal was to see the needle move. Now, as we take a look at data, we'll determine... Your question was, how did we get the 18? You know, what were some of the causes? And we know that there are a variety of reasons. We're working with the goal center. You know, we invite various folks to the table to ensure that we're taking the appropriate next steps. Our goal is to decrease that number, but we're, you know, initially, we're pretty happy with seeing the needle move. So I hope that brought some clarity to some of the questions.
Mr. Evans?
And if it would be helpful, the goal center, I don't know how familiar the board is with that, that's one of our triage activities to move the needle and I think that has helped with those numbers. We'd be happy to have that in a future meeting if that's something you'd like to be. Again, it's one of those strategies. There's a whole litany of strategies and that was kind of my point on giving some examples from schools is, in some cases, it's going to be, the need's going to be different because that school's identified more mental health needs than school X. School Y needed more supports in other areas. So it does depend on the site, but the overall metrics and team effort and individually working with schools and then overall looking at, is it going down? Which, gosh, it's, what is it, it's down half of what it was two years ago? So huge progress on that. What was it, 2,500 just two years back? So huge progress. I'm just, I'm blown away by the progress that our schools are making, that our kids are making, that our families are making, that the teams have done as we've gone through this process. It's going to be tough to keep this up, to be quite honest, for all of our schools and our staff that are working on this, because that is huge. To drop from 2,500 to 810, it's just, that's unusual. So I think we're setting that bar pretty high, but it's important work and I think the staff knows it. So I appreciate everybody's effort on that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, oh, thank you very much for...
I was just going to say, welcome to the new team and we look forward to hearing from all of you, what you're all doing. So thank you for your efforts and you're answering all the tough questions.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move to J1G, Committees of the Board Update. So we'll start first with accountability. Mr. Scanlon.
We met sometime last week, maybe. They kind of blur together. But we had a meeting to where we were just kind of having some high-level discussions of how do you tie the superintendent's increase in pay to the performance of the school district, the strategic plan? You know, how do you make it to where it's not just an arbitrary number that is, you know, we increased it, I think this past year was 3%, but we didn't really base it on some solid data that supported that. So we talked about what data is something that we want to tie to the contract and also is not manipulative by the, by anything that it's just solid data and it's, you know, whether it's graduation rates, remedial classes that graduate, our graduates have to take at the collegiate level. We're just having some conversations about that and looking at some contracts in surrounding school districts and also then talking about, you know, not only the board input, but then superintendent input and a principal evaluation to kind of help make sure that we've got that 360-degree evaluation that we want to eventually get on all members of the, whether it's a teacher, principal, or superintendent. So that was the earlier conversations that we had and we're starting to move down that path.
Great. Any questions? Okay. The Budget and Audit Committee is not meeting right now. We're letting Mrs. Kenoke work with the auditors who will be here for the next month, so she'll be kind of busy with them. Communications Committee met and we specifically talked about three things related to board communication, one being, and two of those items reflective of our training back in April that we had. So one item is the development of a board calendar and Mr. Ray has done a significant amount of work and has gotten us to a great place. So at our next meeting, I think we'll be able to see if, what other tweaks we want so that we can get that out to the board, just to be able to give us a sense of what things we should be looking at, for instance, every September and October and ensuring that that happens. One of the other items that we talked about was a standard form for board presentations and I think Mr. Ray has one queued up for next board meeting that's similar to the Nebraska School Board Association recommendation. So we'll see how everyone likes that and then we'll gather input and tweak that as we need to or make changes. And then the third item, which we have not started on, but we know we need to, is a board handbook and to bring recommendations to the board on what would be in a board handbook. And so we're looking at what the district had previously and also looking at some handbooks from other districts as well. So those were, I think, the three significant communications things we talked about. Is there anything else I'm missing? Okay, with that, Policy Committee meets next week, so they have not met. Americanism Committees, somebody want to give an update on that?
An update, I was ready for last week and Mr. Wayne's not here, so I apologize. But we did meet and actually is Susan, Dr. Kristoferson, she's not here. Dr. Kerberg, oh, she has the update, oh, man. So basically, we just went over through Constitution Day. We are basically studying two economic books and when's the last time we updated those books?
[inaudible].
Yeah, it was a long time ago, but there's actually two teacher committee groups right now that are going to review them and I think we'll approve them probably in the spring and then they'll go into effect in the fall, so.
Great. Student Assignment Plan Committee, Mrs. Underwood?
The Student Assignment Plan Committee met on September 22nd and we talked about a few things. Grade level configuration, community discussions are starting to happen this week through about And that's just kind of getting the word out to parents about transitioning middle schools to 6-8, those middle schools that we voted on. The Student Assignment Plan website continues to be developed and that'll be a very handy tool for our families to utilize, you know, with just a few clicks of a button, figure out what schools are available to you and the offerings that each of those schools have. And then the research department is working with a consultant on redrawing all of the walk zone boundaries for the various schools and school levels and that is quite a task. I don't think I fully appreciated how much work that is until we were talking about it at the Student Assignment Plan Committee meeting. So that is all being thoroughly worked through. One of the other things that came up during our meeting, which was actually Ms. Williams' idea, which I thought was a great idea, we were talking about just getting the word out to families about the Student Assignment Plan as well as kind of the grade level transitions and then in addition to that, there's a lot of bond work going on. There's just a lot that's happening at our individual schools over the next few years. So we thought it would be great to have one location on this school, on the school webpage that kind of talks about everything that's going on at your school. So that would include, like I mentioned, grade level transitions, bond work, and student assignment plan updates. So that was one thing that we also wanted to kind of work through on a communication level.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, Legislative Committee, Mrs. Fay.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, which is actually October 1st, and Mr. Evans gave us an update on testimony that he provided over interim study on poverty and LEP funding. And then there's a joint hearing that'll be going on over LR 332 and 344 that have to do with financing for public education and that's on November 12th and I believe that Ms. Kenoke will be providing testimony at that one. And the Learning Community Superintendent's will be meeting with Senator Sullivan next, no, later this week, this week. Friday, I think, no, Thursday, Thursday, this week. So we talked about the position that the board took last year in regards to learning community legislation and at this point, there are no, we have no recommended changes to bring before the full board as a committee. Then we also reviewed OSERS and the special meeting that the trustees had two weeks ago. And again, we discussed the current position that the board took last year and at this time are recommending no changes. There's no pending, there's no bills that are being introduced or there's nothing to... So we're recommending that we stay currently with the positions that we took last year as regards to OSERS. And we talked a little bit about some of the outreach that we're doing to the Omaha area senators. So if you want to be a part of that, there's still time to do that, but we are making an effort to reach out to our Omaha area senators and make sure that they know what's happening in the Omaha public schools and are familiar with all the good things happening in our district. We meet again early November.
Thank you. And Mrs. Underwood wants to add one more thing back on the Student Assignment Plan.
Yeah, so thank you to Mr. Ray for bringing that to my attention. I forgot one important piece. So originally, the original plan for Beverage Middle School, which is currently going through design right now for an addition and renovation, the original plan was to have sixth grade be added midway through the 17-18 school year. So the kids would go on winter break and then come back, and then sixth grade would come back starting in January of 18. That's a little bit of an awkward transition, so we're proposing to, well, the plan now is to wait until the 18-19 school year. And I know when I was serving on the CM@Risk interview committee, that was a concern that was brought up by the principal. So, and I think that's been shared with other members of the board as well. So we thought that was probably just a good plan. Let's hold off on adding sixth grade until 18-19.
Thank you very much. And did anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fay? Okay. Construction Manager@Risk, I had the opportunity actually to sit in on the Northwest High School Construction Manager@Risk interviews and it was a very educational experience and so I hope that everyone will be able to do that in a school in your sub-district or serve as an alternate because you certainly get a different perspective and you learn a significant amount about the effort that goes into all of the project, whether it be interaction with students, keeping the building safe, all the construction components. So I thought it was wonderful. Specialty Schools Review and Recommendations Committee.
We don't have a report at this time.
I think you're meeting next week, is that right? Okay. So they're meeting soon. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Mr. Scanlon?
We had the two presentations tonight and I can answer any other questions if there are any, but I think that's been covered.
Perfect. And then Code of Conduct is not until December, the next meeting. So I think that takes care of all of our committees. Does anybody have any questions about any of those items?
I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment. We've been talking about it just with our colleagues across the state and I just want to say thank you to all of my board colleagues. We have a lot, I mean, our meetings are tremendously long and hopefully we can start to start narrowing these down so they're not six-hour meetings, but the amount of work that we're doing in committees is just as tough and it's hard in asking those questions. And so I just wanted to say thank you because I sit on a committee at least with one of everyone. And so it's something that we should share, that, you know, we're not just meeting for the sake of meeting, we're really having those tough conversations. We're asking staff to kind of do a little more than, like, their plates are already full, but it's important work and so I just wanted to thank everyone. I know it's a challenge with your work schedules and other commitments, but I think it's important work and so I think that should be said.
Thank you, that's true. We're putting in a lot of time and I think it's appreciated by all of us and we're making progress with that. So with that, we'll move on to J2A, Schematic Design Approval of the 2014 Bond Program at Western Hills Elementary School. I know Mrs. Fay asked if we could put this on as an action item, so did you want to go ahead and share with us?
Sure. Thank you for taking it off the consent agenda and putting it on the regular agenda as an action item. I asked for that because I've received some calls from people who live in the neighborhood with some specific questions, one of them being, could you, and we've got the drawing up there as well as we all got it here, the proposed green space that's in there relative to the current green space, there's a perception in the neighborhood that perhaps they're losing quite a bit of green space. So I thought was hoping that you could just address that. The capacity of the building is also, do you want me to do one question at a time?
Yeah, I'd rather, I can answer this.
Let's talk about this one then.
The site.
Great, let's do this one first.
I'm going to ask you to go to, so this page number six in the document that you have gives you a little better understanding of where the existing facility is and the existing facility is, on the left-hand side, it's kind of the H-shaped. So currently, as far as the green space question, you can see underneath the darker shade where the existing portables are and then directly below that's actually currently hard surface play area. So the footprint of the new building on the northwest angle, if you will, is really the only space that there isn't currently, some type of building component on the ground. So the group really did a great job of hearing the community's concern about impacting that green space and positioning the building to minimize that, but to also ensure that you have a, what they would refer to as a front yard, to make sure that there's good offset from the busy street of Western that'll allow for the adequate staff parking and then parental drop-off in that front. That's going to be separate from bus, which again is a best practice. So really from a, and I don't have the calculation as far as the acreage or the square feet of green space compared to the new and the old, but if there is a perception it's being impacted greatly, it is just perception, the reality of the actual configuration. The building, you can see, also does move to the north, so it does get centered up a little bit to the site. Of course, that provides us opportunity for that bus drop-off in the back as well, but from a physical structure, it does move off the south boundary a little ways.
All right, thank you. If you've ever been to Western Hills, parking is an enormous challenge. So then, let's go to the bus drop-off one then, since you're up here. So I've had some concerns about the bus drop-off being on the south side, sort of backing up to folks who, whose backyard's back up to the school, so maybe you could talk about that for a moment.
And just as a note, so everyone's aware, these questions did come up at an August 5th community meeting, so the information you're getting today is no different from those discussions. So I want to make sure, from a transparency perspective, there's a good understanding that we're providing all of the information as it's available. But this drawing here really shows the distance on the left-hand side would be a residence, so there's a significant grade change and I think we're still trying to dial that in, but it's between 12 and 15 feet of drop. So the question that was asked, I think, in the community meeting was, you know, are there going to be buses right outside of my window? But from a line of, and the answer is no, line of sight perspective, it's going to look exactly like it does today, or very, very similar, building elevation will too. So the distance from the property line to where the bus drop-off will be is about 60 feet in distance. There is no retaining wall planned or anything like that right now, it'll still be at a mowable slope and it'll be maintained by the district. But one of the concerns that we heard was the congestion that the buses created in the neighborhood. So the goal was to alleviate that congestion. We didn't want to do anything on Western just because of the busyness of the street and it really made sense to bring that bus traffic onto the district property. So this was the best solution to meet the green space need of maximizing it and providing the most efficient way to still bring bus traffic onto the district property to control it better. So that's the conversations.
Thank you. And then the last question has to do with capacity. The new building is being built to hold substantially more students than the current building and I've had a lot of questions as to why.
Sure, absolutely. And I think it's important to understand that capacity does differ from membership. Capacity speaks to the potential of a building. Membership speaks to the utilization. Just want to clear that up. Current capacity, a rated capacity, which is based on 19 students per classroom, is 494 students, looking at a proposed capacity of 570 students. That's also rated at the same 19 per classroom. So that's the difference between the current and the proposed capacities. As far as uses for those space...
The reasoning behind increasing it by that much, I think, is their question.
Sure. I can't really speak to how they're, or why they're increasing it this size, but it was based on an estimate of increased student membership in this area. Both the home attendance area is growing, there's also being a magnet school, a significant number of option-in students. There's also 67 students in the home attendance area who are eligible for pre-K that are currently not utilized. I noticed in the Educational Specifications Document that they are adding the four classrooms that come from our early childhood expansion, so certainly some of the building's additional classroom space will be used for that. There's also significant numbers of other use spaces being added, kiln rooms and family rooms and book rooms, things of that nature.
So one of the things you didn't talk about was the large number of students who live in the attendance area but attend other schools outside of parochial schools, private schools, or opt out. So are we anticipating that with the new facility, they're, we may attract and retain more of the neighborhood students?
There are 140 students, 14-15, who do not attend OPS schools. 70% of them, or 98, go to private schools or parochial options, of which there are many in the neighborhood. Additionally, 42 students, or 30%, do attend schools in other districts, other learning community districts in particular. And I would think that the great hope would be to bring those students back. If you look at even a quarter of them coming back and this new projected rated capacity of the building that would bring it up to roughly 80% utilization, if just a quarter of those students, of 140 students, that'd be 35, were to come back. So I think there is great interest in those students coming back to the district and if they do, this will still keep the building within a good utilization.
Well, I appreciate you all answering the questions and we, us getting it stated publicly and in a format that anybody can go online and access this information going forward, so thanks a lot.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Scanlon?
I just think that it's important for the public to know that, you know, every, it seems like almost every single elementary school, we have in the neighborhoods difficulty with buses and traffic and drop-off. And living in a neighborhood that deals with that also being a magnet, I'm sure they'd trade straight up for this configuration, for the busing and everything and I think this really does alleviate a lot of congestion that unfortunately, we're not able to solve every single neighborhood school with this bond issue, but I think this is a very efficient plan and helps with that busy street of Western. So if your constituents don't want it, I'm sure ours, mine will.
Very good. Mrs. Underwood?
While we're on the subject of bus routes and stacking areas and things like that, I know this was brought up at the Bell Ryan meeting and I've experienced it with projects that I've worked on. The city is only technically allowing one access per site these days and I know, I think at Bell Ryan, it was mentioned that a waiver was going to be gone, to be applied for that. Are we seeing any issues with the ci, it seems like the city would work with us on that kind of thing? I just wanted to ask the question.
I don't have any update on that, that specific issue, but I know that Mark's attended a few meetings related to the city.
We've already been to the city on Western Hills and got the approval for the entrances and exits as you see it in the drawing. So we were able to get the lanes a little bit wider and also get the dual points of entry.
You don't see any issues getting multiple access points on these sites going forward?
Each one's unique. We have to go down and visit the city. So far, they've been understanding the need of getting the parents, the traffic flow in and out, being able to make left and right turns out of the parking lots, so they've been working with us.
Yeah, I would think they would too. Okay, good.
Great. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the Western Hills plan.
I move to approve the Western Hills schematic design as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So a motion by Mrs. Fay, second by Mr. Vargas, to approve the schematic design documents for Western Hills Elementary Placement School as part of the 2014 bond program. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to J2B, Second Reading of the 6,000 Series Policies. And I asked this morning, Mr. Ray tells me, that the policies here have not had any changes since the first reading at our last meeting, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
I move to approve the second...
I move to approve the second reading of the 6000 Policy Series excluding 6112, 6362, and 6400.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Scanlon and a second by Ms. Underwood to approve the second reading of the 6000 Policy Series excluding 6112, 6362, and 6400. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move to Policy 4380, 6112, and 6362, and I'll call upon Mrs. Neelis Fresh.
President Gotti, Vice President Williams, members of the Board of Education. Before you this evening, we have three policies, 4380, 6112, 6362. 6112 is the school day for students. We worked with the President of OEA and discussed many updates and changes to the policy, which is before you, and I believe we have a policy in front of you that both sides have agreed to, and it's -- get this open for you here. As you can see, we have added the words designee. We have removed the end of the sentence in Number Two that states outside of the regular school day. We have updated Number Five, the length of the school day, subject to the approval of the Superintendent or his or her designee after the meeting, after the annual meeting with the OEA as outlined in their master agreement. So that's the updates that we have with regard to that particular policy.
Mrs. Neelis Fresh, can we just do, can we just fix that so it says after the annual meeting instead of meeting annual?
Yes.
Or meeting annually? I don't think it's, however.
It's not substantive.
Yeah, it's not substantive.
It's transposed there.
Just clean it up.
And then, we also have religion in the curriculum, which is 6362. After reviewing that policy also with OEA, we have added the word "or proselytizing" to more clearly define the appropriate slash inappropriate instruction that one would have in front of a school. Religion, obviously, under the Establishment Clause, as a arm of the government, we can't advocate for any particular religion. And so while a teacher can teach with regard to religion in a factual or historical context, a manner, advocating for any one type of religion is prohibited in Omaha Public Schools, and so we tried to add some words to help clarify that discussion. And then finally, at the last Board meeting, we had some questions with regard to the employee medical health and dental policy, and so I checked those out. What, as I understand it, there is no, under ACA, there is no requirement under the law for us to have an open enrollment. The only requirement that we would have, since we would be making a material change to the contribution amounts, even though it's not a substantial amount of money, any change they defined under ACA would be material. So removing, moving our 100% contribution to 98% would be seen as an substantial change in the policy. So we would be required, under ACA, to have a period where we provide notification to an employee, so we send them a letter, and then 60 days from sending them that letter, we would be able to implement any changes with regard to that plan, but we have to provide the notice under ACA. But no open enrollment period is required, we are only required to have open enrollment once a year under ACA, and so that's not required as part of the district. As per our discussion previously, we've removed language that says participation in the group health insurance plan by a full-time employee shall be mandatory, and we've replaced it with unless otherwise provided in a collective bargaining agreement, employees may opt out of the school district plan by providing proof of coverage by an outside health insurance plan. So that allows additional flexibility for our employees if they want to opt out, since, for example, before we made single coverage mandatory, we paid 100%, now we're not paying 100% of it. So if they choose not to pay that additional 2%, which I think amounts pre-tax to about $100 a year, they would not be required to, under the change in policy. So that is 4380 in a nutshell, and hopefully that that answers any questions one might have, and I'm happy to entertain any questions on any three of those policies.
Okay, and I did also want, Mrs. Kenoke, I had asked her what the savings might be by approving this policy, and if you want to share with us what that is.
If this policy were approved by the Board, we'd have to give 60 days' notice to the employees, so it wouldn't be effective till January of 2016. So if we did that for seven months, from January through July 31st, we'd have a savings of $75,000 for the district.
I just thought that was important to, for us to know what the savings would be by approving this policy. Are there any other questions that anyone has or concerns? Okay, if not, someone went to make a motion on these three policies.
I move to approve the first reading of Policy 4380, 6112, and 6362.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So there's a motion by Mr. Scanlon and--
Mrs. Gotti. If we could just add specifically that language or the transposition of that language, I would recommend that.
Yeah, so under, so that motion would also include changing the words to say after meeting annually, or after the annual meeting, which is appropriate.
After meeting annually.
After meeting annually with the OEA, so that would be the wording change that would be included in that motion on 6112. So are you willing to?
I'm willing to accept that.
Okay. So the motion by Mr. Scanlon and the second by Ms. Williams is to approve the first reading of Policy 4380, 6112, and 6362, with a change to 6112 of after meeting annually. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Underwood.
Aye.
Six I.
Motion carries. This time, I would entertain a motion to approve, or to waive the second reading if anyone wants to make that motion. Okay, not hearing that, we will have that on the next agenda. There are no receipt of reports. Ms. Williams.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel pending litigation, legal advice, real estate, and negotiations.
Motion by Ms. Williams to go into closed session, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Underwood. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Six I.
Motion carries. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel pending litigation, legal advice, real estate, and negotiations. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 10:13 PM.